Everyone, welcome to our May 21st, 2020 city council meeting. We have a very full agenda. And so that everyone is clear about the way these call-in meetings are working, you can watch us on live streaming on Facebook. And that's HTTPS backslash backslash WWW.Facebook.com slash CH3BUCCANNON slash. And if you have any questions during the meeting, you should send them to, and this is the email that Kelly Cronin-Sams is monitoring just down the hall from Council Again, if you want to send comments or questions, buccannon@buccannonvw.org. So the first thing we're going to do is start off with our traditional moment of silent reflection. And in addition to the 71 West Virginians who we have now lost to the COVID virus, I'd also ask that we keep in our best warmest thoughts, wishes, prayers, a former Lady Bobcat basketball coach, Mike Barry. And that's Mike Barry, B-A-R-I, who left us about three years ago and at 58 years old, succumbed to the COVID-19 virus earlier this week. Let's keep the Barry family and all of his friends and people that knew Mike in our best thoughts, wishes, prayers. Thank you very much. Council Lady Albaugh, would you be so kind as to yet again lead us in the pledge to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I have a statement to read relative to the pandemic. It is fashionable these days for city councils and legislatures and governors and President Trump to do things relative to the pandemic. And Buchanan is taking, continues to take its cues from Charleston and Governor Jim Justice. So bear with me. This will actually be item F8 under strategic that we will act upon after you hear this statement. Good evening. As we continue to take our cues from Charleston, it's fashionable to use the phrase reopen this and reopen that. To be clear, our city operations for the most part were never closed. There has never been a stutter or a stammer insofar as our city's execution of our essential services is concerned during the pendency of this pandemic threat. Our employees have performed day in and day out in an exemplary manner. We should all appreciate that dedication by our excellent city staff to their serving our community. Each one of them is a hero or heroine or a shero, as some say. We believe we are prepared to establish a timeline to cautiously relax some of the restrictions that were put in place during the past two to three months to protect our residents. We all have made a considerable investment in minimizing the impact of COVID-19 in our area. The vast majority of us have behaved as our federal and state governments asked us to behave by washing our hands, sheltering in place, social distancing, wearing masks when going to places like Walmart, and generally conducting ourselves sensibly. We do not suddenly want to destroy our investment. Just like you wouldn't take your nest egg to Vegas and risk blowing it all by placing it on red or black on a roulette wheel, neither do we want to realize a serious setback by abandoning our safe practices. It's not worth the gamble. With council's endorsement this evening, here's what I propose during the next couple of weeks. One, restoration of commercial activities in Jawbone Park beginning next Friday, May 29. This will include our farmers market activities, Create Buchanan's grilled chicken sales, and like vendors, provided that all of the constraints are observed. That is, social distancing, proper sanitation practices, et cetera. All vendors intending to operate out of Jawbone Park should register at City Hall before starting their activities. Our streets and parks crews will return freshly painted picnic tables to Jawbone Park by that date, and our crews will sanitize picnic tables and restrooms there and collect garbage daily. Two, limited restoration of some city meetings previously deemed non-essential, including the Consolidated Public Works Board that will meet by phone at least, beginning on Thursday, May 28, and the Police Civil Service Commission that will meet on Wednesday, June 10. Meetings of other non-essential city committees, boards, commissions, et cetera, will continue to be suspended through the July 2 council meeting unless some emergency arises, and council then will reassess the opportunity to reconvene regular meetings of those other bodies. Three, reopening of the foyer at City Hall to the public on or about Monday, June 1. We will be taking several preventive safety measures, including the installation of Plexiglas, limiting the number of people having interior access at one time, extra daily sanitation measures, encouraging wearing of masks, et cetera, all to reduce the threat of virus exposure to everyone who enters City Hall. Four, reopening of our city parks, beginning Monday, June 1, from 9:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., to permit our city crews to daily sanitize playground equipment, picnic tables, restrooms, et cetera, for the next day's activities. This sanitizing is not a fail-safe guarantee that surfaces will be entirely clean throughout the next day. We do not have the staffing to dedicate employees to each park all day long. So, park attendees need to be prudent during their visits to our public parks. Wash your hands, social distance, wear masks, et cetera. Five, reopening of the city's Gibson Memorial Library for some services, but by appointment only, begins on Monday, June 1. Check with the library regarding their hours, but we are told that beginning Tuesday, May 26, there will be book curbside pickup, phone the library, 304-472-2339 for details. Six, reopening of the Stockard Youth and Community Center sometime after June 1, and at such time as we are assured that our center is prepared to meet all state criteria for operating a daycare center that includes SYCC's annual summer camp Buccaneer program. Seven, reopening of the Colonial Theater on Friday, June 5, for purposes of dedicating the new gallery and welcoming the youth art exhibition that was postponed from March 14. The exhibition will continue on weekends through June with attendant oversight involving BU art teachers. We will need to limit the number of attendees at the gallery to about 12 at a time. Number eight, conducting of our annual Memorial Day commemoration in Heffner Cemetery at 1: p.m. on Monday, May 25, under the auspices of our VFW and American Legion posts. We will social distance, minimize contact, et cetera. Nine, the tentative 4th of July fireworks exhibition, starting at about 9:45 to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday, July 5, with attendees remaining within or immediately beside their cars as city representatives are working with businesses around the launch site to create a master parking plan to accommodate those desiring to attend. The other festivities and activities that we have had in recent years in Jawbone Park, we just simply cannot cram 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 people into that small of a space. Ten, the easing of the travel restriction previously imposed upon our city employees effective Friday, May 22. However, all employees traveling outside of our state shall report their interstate travel intentions to their supervisors. We still need to be mindful of and monitor for virus hotspots around our country. Right now is not the time to travel to New York City or Washington, D.C. We've had six positive tests confirmed here in Upstate County. 71 of our fellow mountaineers have succumbed to the virus, and more than 1,600 have tested positively in West Virginia. Nearly 95,000 Americans have now died from COVID-19, and the total number of Americans who contracted the disease has eclipsed 1.5 million, with more than 5 million cases worldwide. Our city will continue to take its cues from Governor Justice and state officials. We are aware that our community trusts us with their health and safety to make the best decisions for our community with the information we now have, and we don't take that duty lightly. If circumstances give rise to easing back even more on previously imposed restrictions, we'll respond accordingly. However, if circumstances dictate reimposing restrictions, those actions are possible too during the weeks and months ahead. Yesterday, West Virginia reported 53 new cases, the most in more than a month. So we need to be vigilant in monitoring for virus spikes. Needless to say, this remains a very fluid situation. We continue to be all in this together. And I know as we get through the coming weeks that we'll remain strong as a community while minimizing the impact upon the health of our residents. Anyone having an emergency should contact 911 as you normally would. The best source of information about COVID-19 remains the Centers for Disease Control website. We remain Buchanan strong, but we still have a long way to go to get past this crisis. Please, follow the science and pray for the vaccine. Council, I would entertain a motion that we adopt these 10 relaxed measures as part of tonight's agenda.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Sanders and a second by Mrs. Albaugh. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Thomas?
I say aye.
Okay, thank you. I think we've had a unanimous carriage of the motion, Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Okay, we have no guests this evening unless our stalwart crew from Channel 3, Rodney and Brian. You guys want to, you don't want to sing your favorite song or something like that tonight?
Come on.
We thank you guys for being here again. They never have the cameras on themselves, but the last several meetings Rodney Urban and Brian Demastas have been here doing stellar work to make sure that we're seen and heard out there in the community. So, fellows, we really do appreciate your efforts. Department and board reports. First up is our information coordinator, grant writer, researcher Kelly Cronin-Sams. Kelly, how's it going?
It's going well, thank you. We've been continuing to share information both on the website and on Facebook. We put out information, thank you, Mary Albaugh, on the Memorial Day Veterans Program coming up on Monday. We also said a big thank you to Create Buchanan and all the city staff, as well as volunteers that helped with the Walk of Valor and getting those banners up. We also had just a notice out about Henry Street closure for sewer repair. And we congratulated the 2020 Golden Horseshoe winners. We celebrated Police Week, as well as Water Works Association's Drinking Water Week. We thank childcare providers, that one really got a lot of views. Everyone was happy to see Chuck Loudon with the CDC. And then just additional sharing of both the Health Department and County Commission and state information related to COVID-19 and reminding folks to social distance and consider wearing a mask particularly in gathering spots like grocery stores especially. And that's pretty much it for the news and information on the social media and the website. We also helped, the Strawberry Festival came to us and asked for a little bit of assistance, and we and we helped them apply for West Virginia Humanities Council grant that is CARES Act funding, so we hope that will come through for them. And of course, we had submitted the SAFER grant, still working with Jerry and Brad and Jay and Shayla on the past 5K routes that we had worked on identifying those 5K routes in town, also with Create Buchanan. Continue working with Gabby with the Bucks Volunteer Center, and we did receive the recycling trucks, so that is in now and invoiced so we can do the final reporting on that grant. And we do have the information up on the LED about the Memorial Day program as well as a congratulations to Aaron Anderson, Teacher of the Year, and the Sensus 2020, and the Upstate County election info is up on our LED sign. And actually, I think the Teacher of the Year is scheduled to come down to make a little more room for the Memorial Day program that had just been added. And that's all I have unless there's questions.
Questions for Kelly? Kelly, we, everybody would know it, we'd all be bouncing off the ceiling had we heard about the abandoned mine land grant. We still have not heard anything. Is that a correct statement?
I have not. That was a well-drafted letter that you had sent to the governor's office, and to my knowledge, we have not received anything else from DEP. I know you did get a response for, for the letter.
We did get a, a letter from Governor Justice thanking us for the submittal, and it's in your packet this evening, but he didn't turn up any of his cards and suggest one way or the other.
Close to his vest.
Yeah, close to the vest indeed. We'll, we'll continue to keep everyone apprised.
Can I ask you, Kelly, if you've heard from the West Virginia Strawberry Festival regarding that grant, if they've gotten a response of any kind or?
They sent a thank you, but no additional information.
Okay.
I, when I submitted it, it was electronic application, so I did get a confirmation that it had been submitted. Of course, I entered their contact information for their board members, so they may have also received that confirmation as an email and perhaps even, you know, the full final application, but I do have a copy of the narrative, should anyone like to see those in the budget request.
Question, Mary?
A question and a comment. Kelly, I, I wanted to thank you for getting the information up and ready to go because we had a, we haven't been having meetings at the American Legion or the VFW, but, so it was trying to play tag phone or phone tag and to get somebody to make a decision, so we just kind of made one, and because I think Memorial Day should have been recognized, and I greatly appreciate that. So council members, it was, thank you for voting on it. I didn't want you to think that I was doing anything under the table here, but we had to get our advertising out, you know, and so thank you.
It'll be a great.
It will.
Celebration.
It will be.
Thanks, Mary. Anything else for Kelly? Next up is our Public Works Director, Mr. Jerry Arnold. How's it going, Jerry?
Oh, that good, huh?
Jerry is.
Very good, Mayor.
There he is.
Yeah.
I was almost going to introduce you with your new nickname, but we'll wait until that story another night.
He just hung up.
I'm awaiting, yeah, I'm, I'm here. I'm awaiting the completion of the survey on the roadway to establish the emergency access to the hospital that they had requested. We've also been installing the historic signs with help from Councilman Skinner. I had some questions about some of the vinyl on the rank when it come off. We've got a paint issue with some of the, some of the signposts, so we're going to have to sand those down in place and refinish them before we can apply the rest of the vinyl faces to those. Street Department, we've been working on Pike Lane beside CBS, have the grade work completed, and will be working on the concrete approaches as weather permits. On that project, we got into a little more than what we counted on. We, we ran into a basement of an old house that was there, was backfilled with debris from the house, and it essentially created a trapped water in that basement, so we had a lot of soft materials that just wouldn't work, so we ended up having to excavate a pretty substantial hole to be able to backfill with some stone and solidify that area. So we've got it under control now. Like I said, the grade work's done. We'll get the concrete approaches in and be working on some blacktop here next week or so. We will begin construction on Gateway West. We have a pre-construction meeting on June 1, so the week, June 1, we'll start construction on that. We will be working on the mural project along with the Gateway West project, and the paving contractor will be in next Tuesday, and we'll be paving South Spring Beach Street as weather permits. The Sewer Department, Crew 1, 33 West North Side Sewer Extension, they've laid about 140 feet of pipe, and from the existing sewer where the bore pit site is, the wet conditions hindering the excavation of the bore pit, so they'll skip over the board and continue laying pipe until the conditions get better. Crew 2 completed the Lenny Door extension and now working on a storm sewer drop that led into street. Thankfully, having an all-test were within acceptable limits. The maintenance crew, they built a distilling unit for the lab, saving about $5,000, and installed a fence at the Vicksburg pump station. The UV unit's been ordered, and they received a bid from Borit for the boring machine of $1,125. The Water Department's performed maintenance on the dam and installed a new fire service for Fish Hawk. We'll be draining the basins and removing sediment from those and installing a flow meter on the effluent side of the high-service pumps. Waste collection, as Kelly reported, they received their new hook lift truck that was partially funded with the recycling grant. And under engineering FEMA Community Rating System, the annual report to FEMA and National Fire Insurance Program was reviewed and approved. The Quarter Eight South Waterline Sewer Line Project, the project's underway with Jeff Fallon, and they've laid about 1,098 feet of sewer line and installed five manholes today. The, under the Upstate County Development Florida Madison Street Parking Lot, Jay's waiting the, our departmental reviews which have been completed now, and the project will be used for parking for the UCDA and Innovation Center occupancy. And Mayor, that's all I have unless there's questions.
Questions for Jerry? It's a happening place, folks. Okay, next up is our, our Director of Finance Administration, Ambie Jenkins.
Hello. Okay, so I'm going to give you your balances for your enterprise funds this evening. As of April 30, your waste collection board had $687,644 in money market and checking, they had $57,586 in CDs. The water board had $314,917, and their CDs was $960,423. Sanitary board, $755,911, and their CDs was $250,781. The Consolidated Public Works Board had $122,813 in their money market and checking. The CD for the cemetery is $230,348. As the mayor mentioned, City Hall's going to open the doors to the public for people to come in and sign up for water and do some of the things that's more difficult to do over the phone as of June 1. Only two people will be permitted in the lobby at one time, and we do recommend that people wear masks. We will only have one clerk at each of the windows because we cannot get any closer than that, so we do encourage you to continue to call. We can deal with a lot of things over the phone and online. So you don't have to wait, try, try calling us, we can talk to you on the phone quicker. Stockard Youth Center, as the mayor also mentioned, plans to resume some activities beginning June, two of those is karate and kickboxing. Our director has developed a written plan for this, and that's in the packets, council's packets tonight. She's also developing a written plan to open the building for other activities beginning in July. She'll follow, she's been following the guidelines set by the state and the DHHR and CDC. The Director of Stockard has also been reviewing and evaluating software programs. That's been one of our projects we've been wanting to do for the last year, and this program would allow us to manage payments, activities, and tracking of those activities and the children in those activities. RecDesk is the software that looks like it's going to be a good solution for us, but I'm checking on references right now, and Deborah is looking into a trial version of this software. Remind council, that was a cost that you approved in the budget for 2020-21, and the cost of this one seems like it's well under what we kind of expected to have to pay for it. Jerry already mentioned the bore machine that we took bids on. That's to bore under roads and place pipe under areas where they cannot dig a trench. And then the UV unit which treats the sewer, that was also purchased and ordered. It won't be in for a few months yet. So far on COVID expenses, I can give you an update on that every time, we're up to $7,094, and you'll recall that Upstate County is allocating $22,000 of the funds that they were received from CARES and money through the governor, and that's going to take care of our supplies and expenses. I'm also reading on the next grant that's coming up that the governor's talking about for local government to determine what we might be able to apply for there. I'm, I'm not sure that we'll ever be able to recoup the payroll that was expensed for where we had to rotate people out, but I'm in some conversations with them to try to get some answers to that. We can get, I'm pretty certain we can get all the overtime money back that we had to expense for that. We've got the upcoming election, and of course, the Charles Gibson Library excess levy is on that, and you'll see a legal advertisement in the newspaper by code. We have to, even though the county has advertised the ballot, we have to put out the, the order and another copy of basically what's going to be on the ballot, and you'll see that in the newspaper if you're wondering. Just a reminder to the public that Charles Gibson Library basically operates with this tax levying money, so it's important if you want to keep that little library to vote for it. The bills to be approved, there's about three that are worth mentioning to you. George Wilson Company, we purchased ADA mats, that's the mats that go down for sidewalks, $2,580. Central Supply Concrete for Madison Street was $5,334. And then a company called VJG Associates, we purchased some gloves and safety glasses. And I believe that's all I have. We have a budget revision coming up a little bit later.
Questions for Ambie Jenkins? Thanks, Ambie, and all of our excellent staff out front that.
And we're glad to start doing the normal things.
Yeah, they continue to do the grind, so we, we appreciate everybody. Police Chief Matt Gregory, how's it going, chief?
So good, Mayor. Actually, I was able to get Facebook Live up on my screen here just a few moments ago, and noticed you have probably fancy trinket there beside your necktie.
This, this is, I, I wish you were here so that we could present this to you. This is the Chief Gregory Memorial Fire Smoke Detector, and there's a great story that I hear the chief tells better than anybody, but in a nutshell, the Gregories are such warm-hearted folks. They're, one of their lights at their house, a bird took up residence and built a nest, and they didn't want to use that light because that's where the nest was. Well, lo and behold, one of the Gregory family members turned the light on, everybody went to bed, and as a consequence of the nest becoming very warm and catching on fire, it was the Gregory family that was almost out of house and home. So Chief Kimball from the Fire Department insisted that I present you with this honor, if that's what it is, chief. I think, I think somebody might be pulling your string more than anything, but I'll, I'll be sure to get that to you tomorrow, Matt.
Well, much appreciated. It's a great honor. I'll add that with the fire prevention package that the Fire Department presented me with the other day, that came with a nice little plastic fire hat and a drawing book about fire safety and a very handy safety plan that we can have family meetings about. I'll need to have a few more of those out in the house. So heartfelt thanks to you and the Fire Department for that. Unfortunately, that's only half of the chaos that the, I talked to Ambie about the Gregory name and seems to invoke. Just a couple days ago, as I was making my way to the firearms range in French Creek where we're having our spring qualification for our firearms, I hear a really loud cracking sound, something really that is not a pleasant sound when you're walking towards the firing range. I immediately recognized that as a tree, having heard trees fall in the, in the woods before. The only, the only bad thing about that was I could not see it, I only heard it, and I knew it was closed because it was really, really loud. And once I noticed it, I see this, if it wasn't 100 feet, of course, this is my fishtail, it wasn't an inch, it was a really large tree, I assure you, enough to make me move as fast as I've probably ever moved in my life, I'd run up the hill. So much so that my officers remarked adoringly that they've never seen me move so fast in their lives, and I said, well, when my life depends on it, I can certainly move pretty fast. So the tree crashed down, took out a shed, looked like a bomb went off, there were branches and leaves and wood and splinters and all kinds of stuff shooting all over the place. And so I just chalked that up and just got another Gregory experience along with my fire at the house, many other calamities that seem to follow me around. I texted Tim Smith pictures of the damage of the tree, and he texted back and said, that's God's way of telling me I need a vacation.
There you have it.
What happened to the bird, Matt?
You know, I think that that was the bird's way of getting back to for the fire. It was conspiracy, obviously, the truth against Matt Gregory at this point, I'm convinced of that.
Make a motion to approve Matt Gregory's report.
Thanks, Matt. It's been a while. So now to segue.
Just a few things to report tonight, and it's intentional that. Just wanted to thank you out to a number of different community organizations, first and foremost to the Rotary Club of Buchanan, Upstate, who provided first responders, the Police Department amongst them, with a nice box lunch this past Tuesday. Also, thank you to Buchanan Pizza Hut and Walmart, who has also provided us food over the last week. And I tell you, that's just another example, Mayor, of our community coming together. We've seen time and time again, whether it be just supporting us with, whether it be food, other supplies, cleaning supplies. It's really been amazing to see our community come together during this COVID-19 crisis and really something magnificent to be part of, so big thank you to all those organizations. The Police Department and Vipps continue to work with other community organizations for food drives that continue throughout the community. One most recent one occurred at the Senior Center this past week, and we anticipate another larger food drive that takes place at the High School on Friday that our Vipps will also be assisting with. And of course, we also continue to work with the OEM for maintaining our PPE, which continues to be in adequate supply as well as local businesses, such as Walmart and Lowe's, to obtain cleaning supplies, which again, we're maintaining in adequate supply, are able to share with the Fire Department, City Hall. and City Hall working together to make sure that we have all this. The report also includes my much of the report. As you all can see, our activities remain down with one exception, unfortunately, and that's drug activity. And in particular, there was a period of time in, at the late April, over the course of about a week and a half, two weeks, there were several overdoses throughout, not only the city but the surrounding community, one of, at least one of which unfortunately was fatal. As a result of this, our task force began a major investigation and partnered with other officers of the City Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the State Police. And on May 1st, served five simultaneous search warrants at five separate locations that, at that time, netted two felony arrests and was able to take over $25,000 worth of heroin off the streets. So obviously, with that being a major investigation, that remains under review and ongoing. And mayor, that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Questions for Chief.
What were the ages of the individuals that overdosed?
Most of them were, I still don't have my head. Dave, I think they were in their twenties. I think there was at least one or two in their thirties. But young, young folks.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Chief Gregory?
Stay out of the woods.
Mary suggested.
I'll stay out of the woods.
Stay out of the woods.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just going to throw her a plate, I think.
I, I might be receptive to giving a certain Mrs. Holly Gregory a gift card to Walmart or something if I could get a picture of you with that plastic fireman's hat. Just saying. Matt?
She's sitting here vigorously shaking her head. So I think that's contested, so. But I have to move the safety kit.
Tell all the guys and our gal angel to be safe out there.
Thanks for the great work, chief.
We appreciate you.
Thanks, Matt.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you.
Next up is City Attorney Tom O'Neil, Tom.
I defer him to Strategic.
Tom, Tom's got a couple of things to take up with us during Strategic, but he's gonna wait until then. And we have Deborah Brockelman on the line. You know, we haven't had Stockard board meetings the last couple of months. But as Ambie indicated earlier, and I did in our opening comments, we are getting closer to reactivating certain elements of Stockard. So Deborah, do you want to say anything else about that? If you're still on the line out there in telephone land?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here. On the first, we're just, we're wanting to bring kickboxing and karate back with all the social distancing and requirements that go with that. And then in January, I see, July, we want to have an abbreviation of our summer camp, which would be for about a month. We have had so many calls, you know, that parents really, they really need us to be back because some of them need to go back to work. But there's a lot of requirements, and I think that we have them all outlined in our plan. We'll have smaller groups, we'll be taking the temperatures of staff and children. We'll be meeting them at the front doors and we'll have a touchless scan for the kids. So nobody has, the parents won't be, you know, nobody has to do any touching of any pens and paper and all that. We just will scan them with a card that we will create with a barcode. And as long as their temperature's good, we'll be good to go. And but our activities, we won't be going on field trips, not to the swimming pool. So we'll be doing everything on site, maybe some walking tours or something like that. But for the most part, we'll be on the playground and, you know, in the buildings with reduced activities because we'll be in smaller groups. But hopefully, this will, this will work out. And next year, we'll be without this virus. But everything else is going good. Also, we, another thing that has happened, and I reported it a few meetings ago about our fire alarm. And through a process of elimination, we have to have a board replay. And it would just be the board, it wouldn't be everything that goes with a fire alarm system because the company that we've contacted, they still service the type of fire alarm that we have. And I believe they're the only ones in the state that still service these older boards. And they can get the parts and do all the work. And I, I don't know if it's in your packet, but it was the quote for the, for the fire alarm system. And they are, they, they do have the state contract, and they do all the work for the schools as well. And that's the company I think that we would want to go with. I don't know if you'll need to approve that or not because it was approved a few meetings ago, but I think the cost is a little more than what we thought.
We have it done under Strategic F4. So we'll take that up here in just a few minutes. Yes, ma'am. Anything else, Deborah?
No, we're just doing some extra cleaning and throwing out some old stuff and, you know, just getting the building in good shape and ready to get the kids back.
That's what it's all about, isn't it?
That's, yes, we can't wait. We, we miss them.
Questions for Deborah Brockelman? Thanks, Deborah. Tell everybody we said hey.
Thanks, ma'am.
Correspondence and information. You got a bunch of stuff in your packet, folks. Hopefully, everybody knows now that the May 12th election was moved to June 9th. There's a FOIA request from Tawney Insurance. There's the Mayor's Proclamation for National Nurses and Hospital Week. There's a proclamation and opening remarks for National Police Officer Week. There are four separate proclamations pertaining to the Golden Horseshoe Award winners. In my opening remarks, I got to dub four eighth graders as knights and ladies of the Golden Horseshoe Society last week. It was a real thrill. There's a letter from the Office of the State Auditor, reminder of deadline for submitting budget revisions. There is my thank you letter to Woma Jean McCauley, 81-year-old gal down there on Randolph Street that has sung more than 200 masks for folks here in the community. There's a thank you letter to the Upsher County Commission for the nearly $23,000 that they're sending us to help out with the cost of COVID-19. There is the deed to 15 Madison Street that's been recorded in deed book 567 at page 454. Thanks to Mr. O'Neil for preparation of that deed. And then there's several letters to Walmart and others soliciting their use of their parking lots for the July 5th Independence Day fireworks display celebration. The consent agenda consists of four items that I'll solicit your approval of here in just a moment. Those four items would be the approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting on May 7th, the approval of the building and wiring permits, the approval of the payment of the general fund bills, and finally, the acceptance of the resignation of Buchanan Police Department Corporal Josh Wilson. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. So moved. I have a motion by Mr. Rylands and a second by Mrs. Albaugh. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Minutes reflect that the motion carries unanimously. And that takes us down to our strategic matters. F1, we're asking that the Police Civil Service Commission, and they already have a meeting scheduled for June 10th, so this is a timely thing, that they certify the next list of eligibles and consider possible new testing for the position of probationary police officer. This is standard operating procedure when a vacancy is created within either the Police Department or the Fire Department. I would encourage the council to approve this matter. I'd entertain a motion that we do so.
General.
Hello.
I think I heard Mr. Sanders first, and Mr. Rylands was second. If we had a third, it would have been Mr. Skinner. But we have a motion by Sanders, a second by Rylands. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pam, did I hear you?
Aye, yes.
Thank you. F2, authority to execute the U S I, West Virginia Public Employees Insurance Agency Consulting Agreement. This involves Pete Thaxton, who is the guy that basically brought the P E I A plan to us. And as we came to understand it during his discussions, he's going to realize about a $20,000 commission for handling these things for us. I would entertain a motion that we approve the consulting agreement.
So moved.
I have a motion by Sanders and a second by Thomas. I think that was Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F3, discussion concerning the revisions to the City of Buchanan Employee Handbook. Mr. O'Neil, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. So each of you should have received a copy of the draft handbook. This is the form that it is in now after going through review by the supervisors of the different departments. I think in our last meeting, we had talked about some of the subjects that were, some of the topics of the revisions from the prior version of that handbook. There's one issue in particular that I'd like to bring to your attention because it's a, it's a change that was suggested by one supervisor, but I think it's something that the council would need to talk about and make a decision on and consider for action at the, at the next meeting. And in particular, we have a smoke-free policy on city properties. There was a, there was a suggestion or a desire to change that into a tobacco-free policy. Some of the feedback was, you know, that'd be difficult in some departments, but in others, like at the Public Safety Complex, it might be more feasible to make the Public Safety Complex a tobacco-free facility as opposed to just a smoke-free facility. And so I indicated that I would take that to council for your consideration of that. Happy to discuss it now and that we can, and it'll be incorporated. Depending on what you do now, we can incorporate it in the final draft. It's going to be up for vote at the next meeting.
So to be, to be clear, our practice has long been to disallow smoking or vaping within or around any of our facilities.
Yeah, that's unchanged. That'll be unchanged.
So this, this would be more chewing tobacco.
Yeah.
And the question is, is this facility-based or is this employee-based? Because if it's a health initiative, which I suppose the city could adopt, it would be employee-based. If it's health within the facility, and we've got guys working off the back of a garbage truck or in a trench with a water line or sewer line or something like that, I think what you're advocating or what has been brought to you for advocacy is that we make it a facility-based initiative. Is that correct?
It was originally, it was originally proposed as a, an employee-wide proposal. But the feedback was that might be a bridge too far at this point, and making it a facility-based proposal for the Public Safety Complex is more doable.
Would it, would it be all city facilities?
No, it would be only the Public Safety Complex.
City Hall would not be covered by?
Not, I mean, the council couldn't elect to make.
Stockard Youth Center would not be covered by?
I mean, under the, under the suggestion, as it was suggested, no, but the council's free, certainly free to expand that scope.
So if it's tobacco-free and it's not vaping, what, what is it? They're asking.
Chew it tobacco.
No.
But it's not tobacco-free, I mean.
Well, it'd be smoking, vaping, and smokeable tobacco. That'd be prohibited.
Thoughts? I just wonder, I mean, if, if the advocacy for the adoption of this comes from our employees and colleagues at the Public Safety Complex, I, I get, I get it. But I wonder whether there are other facilities, such as the Stockard Youth Center and the Gibson Library, other things that the city owns, is tied with. I, I don't know that I would go so far as to invoke this relative to water sewer waste collection operations.
No, I think that's where, I think that was kind of seen as the, where we don't want to go with expanding.
But City Hall, Stockard Youth Center, Gibson Library, Public Safety Complex.
I'll give up on Copenhagen.
Skull, I thought you did skull. Didn't I, didn't I get you skull for Christmas, Tom? So what do you think, council? I mean, this is kind of a, we're open for discussion on this. That's the reason, we're not adopting this tonight. Dave? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I, I think city parks need to be covered also.
That gets into a, that opens up a whole other can of worms, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it does. But it's not very encouraging to go to the city park and have to smell smoke and step on tobacco.
But this is more of an employee-based discussion right now as opposed to a broader community.
Yeah, this is the employee handbook, Dave.
Okay, do our employees have to pay a differential if they are tobacco users?
No.
For the health premium?
No.
Because a lot of, a lot of organizations are doing this, man.
But that's not the question right now, it's.
This is, this is about the employee handbook.
Handbook.
Not, not our healthcare initiatives and not use of the city parks.
If we ever did that, that still would be covered, the employee handbook.
We don't have feedback from any other supervisors because there wasn't a reason to ask for feedback, correct?
Well, it went to all the, the draft went to all the supervisors, and all the supervisors were asked for their feedback.
Okay. And we only got feedback from what?
Got feedback from four.
Four? What, what would the council's thoughts be if we extended this prohibition of chewing tobacco by employees at the Public Safety Complex, City Hall, the Stockard Youth and Community Center, and the Gibson Memorial Library? What, what do you think about those ideas?
Is Deborah still on the phone?
Deborah, are you still there?
I'm still here. I don't have any tobacco tumors or smokers working for me that I know of.
Okay. So it's, it's not really, if we adopt a policy that prohibits that type of action, you don't think that's going to cause anybody to leave us or anything like that?
No, I, I would appreciate it.
But Deborah, you don't, you don't have people coming into Stockard that are smoking or chewing, do you?
It's disallowed.
Not, I mean, they don't come in the building. Now, I won't say that they're not outside smoking somewhere. But if, we've had to ask people to, on the basketball court, to put cigarettes out the door. But it's not been a problem.
And there's signs posted.
Yeah, yeah, there's, it's a smoke-free zone. So, but we're talking about employees now, right? I don't know that any of my employees smoke. If they do, they don't do it on the property.
Pam?
Is Matt still on the phone?
Chief, are you still out there?
Yeah, I'm here. We're, I guess, not to put you on the spot, but I mean, were, were you involved with, with the recommendation coming out of the Public Safety Complex for asking for this? And I guess, I just, could you maybe elaborate as to, as to where, you know, And I guess, I just, could you maybe elaborate as to where, you know, the reasoning and how this just came about specific to the public safety complex? Sure. I was actually not involved in this specific recommendation. I did review the handbook and made another, a number of recommendations, most of them just making sure everything was consistent with Taliya. This particular one, I did not mention. However, I just slipped into the conversation. I don't think that if the city elected to ban tobacco usage for employees, I don't think that would adversely affect us. I wouldn't see any issues with it. Our policy right now allows what tobacco usage is, the officers not engaging with the public, so like when they're on patrol or in their office working on, work on their own. But if we chose to disallow that, I certainly don't see any problems with that from the police department's operations.
I would entertain a motion that Tom O'Neil be permitted to edit that section of our employee manual that would prohibit the use of smokeless tobacco along with smoking and vaping at our public safety complex, at City Hall, at the Stockard Youth and Community Center, and at the Gibson Memorial Library. Could I have a motion to that effect?
Sound move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh. Could I have a second to her motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Now, we are not yet adopting the manual. We're going to look at this at the next meeting in June and we'll get it spruced up then. So please, if you haven't, I found a four or five commas that I didn't like, so, you know, there'll be some minor, minor things coming for me for Tom. So please read the last draft of the manual and if you have any thoughts on it, register your concerns with Tom and he can weigh in, so.
I reviewed it. Thank you.
What else, Mr. O'Neil?
That's all.
That's all for now. All right.
Thanks, Tom.
F4 is the approval of allocation of funds for the Stockard Youth and Community Center for the fire alarm system replacement. And we're not really replacing the entire system, it's just one of the electrical panels that comprises the system. Ambi, do you want to speak to that? We are going to be required to do a budget revision. Is F4 and F5 kind of segwayed together or not?
Yes, I included that in the budget revision because I knew that was coming up. The fire alarm panel is $13,289.
Did everybody hear that? The cost of this panel to meet what the state fire marshal office requires us to do at Stockard, the cost to replace the panel, not the entire fire system, but the panel, is $13,289. Ambi will tell you where that money will come from, but why don't we go ahead and approve the expenditure and then in F5, she's going to explain where it comes from. I'd entertain a motion that we make that investment at the Stockard Youth and Community Center. I have a motion by Mr. Thomas. I have a second by Pam Buckleoo. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F5, approval of resolution 2020-05 budget revision, and we're back with Ambi, Mrs. Jenkins.
Okay, so earlier in your packet, you saw where the state auditor kind of gives limitations on when they will accept budget revisions, which is in June, but the budget needed some attention, so we just thought we'd just go ahead and do it. It's kind of that year-end, catch-up, clean-up, reallocate funds where they should be and have it ready to be finished so we won't go over budget on some items by the end of June. In your packet, you're going to see, the main one I'd like you to look at is where we have actually detailed line by line what we're looking at in items. It's right behind that budget revision and then you're going to see an Excel, yeah, that Excel sheet that's got more detail on it. So the total budget revision will increase the budget $33,247. In revenues, we've gained some revenues because of Datamax identifying people that owe us some BNO and city license. We had an uptick in some court costs, so we've upped that $10,000 in revenues. We've added $10,658 to those revenues. And so that's basically the most of it. There's a few arts and drama, Zumba, kickboxing, Children's Festival where we received some revenues in that we've allocated. And then in miscellaneous revenue, we had received some stop-loss reimbursement, so we're using $10,000 out of there to push down into some things we owe in various line items. So the expenditures is where you have a lot of line items that needed some attention. In mayor's office supplies, again, we had, especially what we've noticed in the last couple of months is because people were paying their bills online, our credit card fees are up a little bit, which is good, that they're doing the work for us. And then Datamax, we have to expense some of the money that we're collecting because of Datamax, we have to expense it back out. In that council contingency money, that's where I'd propose that we take the $13,289 out for the Stockard Youth Center fire alarm system. I also am, for the fireworks, that first half payment is going to be about $2,500, but I said $3,000 because sometimes there's expenses that come up with signage or things like that that I usually don't plan for, so I'm going to plan for this a little bit this So that would take $16,289 out of council's contingency. And of course, then I'm adding it into the fire event, fireworks event, and to the Stockard Youth Center's capital improvements. We expense more in CBR, LET, because of the tickets being up, we expense more in those regional jail fees and things like that. We had Geo Tabs for the police department, so we had to add a little more to the telephones. The fire chief asked if we could move $2,000 from travel and $2,000 from insurance and bonds and add to his materials and supplies. Now, keep in mind that our materials and supplies have also been hit because of COVID. We have to expense these out of our materials and supplies and then the county will reimburse us, but we're not likely, we've got the material, we've got the information ready, but by the time we get the money back, it'd require another budget revision and we're going to be past our deadlines. So that's a little bit of why we have to move our materials and supplies around a little bit. And then JD had a few items he still needed to purchase. Snow removal, we removed $4,300 from there and put it down in street departments, insurance, and telephones, and utilities. The, we're probably going to have to expense the money out of the insurance, that's where that stop-loss came out. We're going to have to expense some money at the end of the year and a lot of it's coming out of street department because of the health insurance overruns. Let's see, what else? Traffic. Salaries, because of Stockard not having Camp Buccaneer and some salaries, we're pulling $6,700 out of there and covering their group insurance. And maintenance, they've also got some Zumba expenses, or Zumba expenses, they've got some COVID expenses coming up. And then the revenues that we received them from Zumba and kickboxing and art and drama, those are being readjusted down into those expenditure items, so, $33,247.
You heard Mrs. Jenkins, I would entertain a motion that we approve this revision to our general fund budget.
Sound move.
You have a resolution to...
I have a motion by Sanders and a second by Rylands. We'll take it up as a motion first and then I'll do a roll call vote. Although, any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries and the roll call vote, bear with me here for just a second. Mrs. Albaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Rylands?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckleoo?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. Okay. F6, the West Virginia Strawberry Festival Association has requested an annual contribution from the city of $5,000. The city traditionally does this, however, we traditionally have a strawberry festival and this year we have not had the strawberry festival. I believe we have received a letter from Mr. Livace from the festival board indicating that some of their expenses have continued notwithstanding the sponsorship of the festival and they're soliciting our help. My understanding is, is that we have helped facilitate a reach out for some stimulus money and we haven't heard definitively yet about that effort. I think that while we certainly want to support our friends with the festival, as we always do, we would also prefer to fully explore the stimulus money opportunities before we would entertain taking monies out of our general fund. Mr. Sanders, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I have a little follow-up on that as well. I did have a brief conversation with the president of the festival, Sandra Bennett, and I've heard from Michael Livace about the items that they were seeking funding to cover, which included office rents, utilities, office supplies, and so on. And then, of course, I spoke with Callie and Ambi about the grant application that was put in, so we're in a little, we're in a little zone here where we have to wait until they do hear officially about the grant. From the West Virginia Humanities Council, some of their guidelines says the council cannot award funding for project costs that overlap with other pending or approved applications for federal funding. For example, if you're applying for funding, support from the National Department for the Arts to a specific expenditure fund from this grant cannot be allocated for the same expenditure. We could substitute the city of a cannon there. So it's going to take a little bit of work, I think, between the City of Buchanan and the West Virginia Strawberry Festival to see, A, if they get the grant and if they get it, how much, how, what that will cover, and then we could come back and visit the situation to see if they have any additional needs and it could be re-presented, I think, to council at that time. I think that would be the best way to approach it.
What's the timeframe on the grant?
I think they'll be able to make an announcement imminently, very soon.
I'd say before Jim 30 is...
Yeah.
Within the next, you know, month, month-ish.
CJ, this is Callie and the grant was submitted just this past Sunday and I believe they were, the Humanities Council was planning to look at the next round that they had received that this past Monday. And that's all the information that I have as far as the timeframe, but they may have received additional information, I don't know, you know, following the submission of the grant.
Well, I think Randy's comments make sense from the standpoint that, you know, they received the grant and their needs not going to be, you know, they'll have a problem that's taken care of.
Well, we've got to be careful that we're not providing funds that would be for the same expenses that the grant is intended to. Yeah, that's where we need to work directly with the festival, so.
I mean, they're a major revenue producer, it's not been this year, period, and they still have ongoing expenses. And plus, I don't know what their contributions have been this year, too. A lot of people figured that, well, I'm not going to give 25 or 50 bucks to the strawberry festivals this year since they're not going to have a strawberry festival.
I've worked with festivals and fairs all over the state and I know they're all in pretty much the same situation. They went into the season expecting, went into the calendar year expecting to have an event, so they did make certain expenditures that they either have to wait for refunds until certain times, or they're going to just carry their losses over into the next operating year. But I think the prudent thing for us to do is to work with the festival as closely as possible, find out what happens with this grant application officially and then see if we, if they have specific needs moving forward and we could take a look at it then.
Yeah, I concur with that, Randy. I think that's what...
And I think that if their grant request to replace this $5,000 or whatever the magical amount is, is not met, but part of it is met, we might consider making up the difference. But let's wait and see how it plays out.
That makes sense.
So, everybody follows what we're done?
Yeah, I just have a quickie question. What's the difference, I know the difference between the CBB board and also...
Strawberry Festival.
It's totally different.
Yeah.
Well, your hotel, motel tax is going to be impacted.
I got that, I got it, I got it. Forget my question, my statement.
So, I think we had a motion and a second already, did we not?
I believe so.
Don't we have a motion?
No, on the festival.
I'd entertain a motion that we hold off, make...
I'm going to move to table.
There you go.
I'd entertain a motion to table. Was that you, Pam?
Yes.
Motion to table?
Mm-hmm.
Can I have a second to Pam?
Well, back to Thomas.
I made the motion to Pam.
Thomas making motion, Buckleoo seconded.
I have a motion and a second and Randy knows who did it.
Yeah. Read it in a minute when it comes.
Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question to table the strawberry festival request for now. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 I think everybody said aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F7 is to approve the city's sponsorship as we have for the past several years now, the 5th of July Independence Day fireworks display celebration. We had previously allocated funds for our fireworks and because of the pandemic, we were leery about the opportunity to do this. And the last couple of weeks, we've circled the wagons and we think that we can do a social distancing kind of a thing. Again, this would not involve the big stuff in Jawbone Park that we typically do, but we could still set off fireworks at the same location in back of Walgreens and Citizens Bank that, where we've used it as a launching pad for the last several years. I would entertain a motion that we approve our sponsorship of the July 5 fireworks.
Sound move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh. Can I have a second to her motion?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Sanders. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. And Callie, if we could, we know that we have dogs and maybe other pets that are ill-affected by fireworks. We also know that there are some veterans. We want to get the word out as quickly as possible that about 10 o'clock or 9:45 on Sunday, July 5, we're going to be setting off fireworks so that they can take their necessary measures to avoid hearing the boom-booms, okay?
Okay.
All right.
I need to call the hospital.
I would ask also people that, you know, are within the city limits to really be careful in regarding setting off firecrackers and fireworks. Think about the neighbors and their neighbors' pets.
Of course, we have the ordinance that limits that opportunity, Dave, but we can add that to Callie's thing to be...
Yeah.
Aware of your neighbors.
Not just the pets, but as you said, veterans with PTSD as well.
Absolutely. We've already acted on F8, that takes us down to F9, and this is just a fascinating thing. Mr. Sanders has been talking about this for the past... Mr. Sanders has been talking about this for the past month or so now. This is possible action by the city of Buchanan to host the World Association of Marching Show Bands World Championships in July of 2023. Randy has put together a super letter that highlights what this would do for our community. And without further ado, before we entertain a motion, I'll let Randy speak to it. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you stated for the past several weeks, a couple of months, actually, I've been working with some different individuals on this idea. It is the World Association of Marching Bands. They have world championships annually around the world and I'll just pick out a few paragraphs from the letter that I submitted to council. A little history, the first sanctioned world championship for marching show bands was held in Canada in July of 1996. This then sanctions have been granted to host the championships in Australia, Brazil, Germany, Italy, Japan, the United Kingdom, USA, Taiwan, Canada. Requests to apply for sanctions have come from several other nations of the world. Thailand, Singapore, Malaysia, Korea, Poland and Austria are currently vying to host future championships. Now, after a review on my own consultation with many people familiar with the Association of Marching Bands, I really do think Buchanan can be a viable host city. As you mentioned, I've spoken to you, Ambi, Callie, Laura Meadows as well about the possibilities of this. Now, some of the principals I've been speaking to include Brad Kelson and for those of you that don't know Brad personally, he's, I call him the mastermind behind some of the great parades we've had with the festival. The strawberry festival's put on some extraordinary events and Brad has been involved with the board over the years in putting together and inviting some of the bands and specialty acts, as well as gentlemanly Lee Winter. I've already spoken to Sandra Bennett from the festival. I've been working with Lisa Lively at West Virginia Wesleyan College to prepare a proposal for them. I've spoken to Shane Turner at Gambles. What I'm looking for here is an opportunity to prepare the bid by utilizing the skills that Callie Cronin-Sams have, of course, Laura Meadows with the Eptech County Convention of Visitors Bureau. We have a date of July 15th. They had this preliminary bid submitted to their board of directors. It's the International Board of Directors. And once they review our initial bid, then they would give us a critique and we'd have an opportunity to reformat the bid and present it to them for consideration in November. And that's when they would be voting on it finally in November and awarding it. It's really a, when I say host city, it's really an opportunity to be the host country. It'll be a host country, host city type deal, be a one and done event. It's nothing that we're looking at doing annually. They don't like to go back to the same locations more than once. It's only been in the United States once before and that was Palm Springs. And Palm Springs actually stepped in after China had an earthquake in 2017 and wasn't able to host us. They hosted it. They were able to produce about a million dollars into the local economy. They should have profited about $56,000 when it was all said and done, but they donated back to their educational systems and the band programs and so forth. What we need to do is we need to gather the wagons, as you would speak, and, and look for potential funding from grants, from Department of Tourism, not only locally, statewide, but nationally. That's where Callie can come in and Laura Meadows can come in. This will be funded totally through those entities. We're not looking for, I'm not looking for the city to have to put money in other than manpower, just, you know, give the committee some manpower. The initial committee would be made up of myself, I'll put a few names here, myself and Callie, Laura Meadows, Lisa Lively. Then we would expand out. We would add many, many more. It's going to take hundreds of people to really pull the thing off if we get the grant. You look at it kind of like an Olympics, a bid on the Olympics and that's really what it would be. Many of the people involved with this association have been to Buchanan, the folks in the United States, let me, let me clarify that, have been to Buchanan with their own bands and, and specialty units. And we already have some friends that are talking favorably about West Virginia Buchanan possibly, Buchanan possibly being the host because they've gone down a parade route. They love the parade route, they love the hospitality they've seen here in the community. They love the campus of Wesleyan, they love everything about it. So it's really, I think, a unique opportunity for us to have a huge impact on our economy. Not only Buchanan, Elkins, Weston, Hartsburg, we'd have to use other facilities for housing, other college campuses for housing. I see us filling up Wesleyan's campus, utilizing pretty much every part of that facility. It would be July 18th through the, up through the 24th of 2023.
Six days.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the, the thing I, you know, we all recognize that tourism, everything is depleted right now, but this is 2023 we're looking at. So I think we're in a great position to move on this and have a good shot at getting it. It'll probably be the only time it'll be in the United States for another 10 years. So I'm looking for council's approval for us just to move forward, have an official committee put together, utilize Callie's skills, Laura Meadows' skills, my skills and putting together live events and let's see what we can do.
If you can't get it '23, there's nothing about '24, '25 either.
I think it sounds like amazing.
It's a no brainer.
Counsel, I'd entertain a motion.
These bands coming from all over.
Yeah, these bands will be from all over the country. It's not, it's not likely we'll have that many bands from the United States itself. A lot of these bands will come from places like Germany, Ireland, Germly, or Germly. That's the 185th country.
Six continents, according to their website. I took a peek at the six continents.
Six continents, yes.
Africa, Australia, Asia, Europe, South America and North America.
Yeah.
How about Antarctica? Don't they have bands down there?
No, but we could send you down there to start one.
We could.
I could talk to give us a shot.
We could.
I'll drive it, Dave.
Mrs. Albaugh is making a motion to approve, and Mr. Rylands has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Going to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Bring home the bacon, Mr. Sanders.
You got it.
All right.
We'll go to work on it.
Thank you. F 10, I have a short statement and then I'll, we'll, we'll see what we can kick off with this one. Okay, we have a new street that's been created as a consequence of our alley trade with St. Joseph's Hospital. This new stretch is located right beside and just to the west of CVS on West Main Street. All nominations for the new street's name should be sent to City Hall. Attention, Callie Cronin-Sams, Information Coordinator, 70 East Main Street, Buchanan, West Virginia 26201. Please be sure to include your name as the ultimate winner will be recognized by City Council at City Hall. Lewd, vulgar or inappropriate nominations will not be considered. Nominations, Mr. Thomas is, he meant something, he was ready to submit, I think. Nominations must be submitted by mailing postmark by June 30 or received by Callie's email at callie.csams@boucanonwv.org. After June 30, a committee of Callie Cronin-Sams, Public Works Director Jerry Arnold, Finance Administration Director Ambi Jenkins, the mayor and city recorder will be tasked with reviewing all nominations and preparing a list of three to five of the best names for consideration by both our residents and the city council. We'll hope to complete this process during July and thereafter we'll put up the new street signs and recognize the winning submittal. Our winner will receive an authentic street sign of their own along with a proclamation, "Have fun, let's name our new street." I would entertain a motion that we start this fun little contest to name our new street down beside CVS. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh. Can I have a second to her motion?
Second.
I have a second. Sanders says, give it to Skinner.
I appreciate that. I didn't think that was being at home.
Robbie, that delay is a killer. I know what you're going through.
The minutes will reflect the motion was by Albaugh and the second was by Skinner.
There you go.
Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Takes us down to comments and announcements. Mrs. Albaugh, you're first up.
I can't even my mouth. We're going to get them quick though. Hope to see everybody on.
Monday.
Monday, Memorial Day at Heffner Cemetery. And thanks for everybody continuing, being safe and being cautious and wearing a mask, protect yourself, wash your hands still.
Yep.
I can't say that enough, but I'll be so glad when the sun comes out and just stays out, stays out. This is depressing weather. So there you go.
Sunny Buck, right?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bucklew.
Yeah, I have to pray to the dump place on Saturday. If we could have maybe one Saturday out of the month that they have, we have a helper out there for older people that bring stuff out that can't really get up in the back of the trucks or, or need help lifting. If we could take one Saturday of the month and, and have somebody to help them.
Are you, are you talking about the transfer station, Pam?
Yes, yes.
I, I think we would need to refer this to the Waste Collection Board, but we can put it on the June agenda. What is that, June 4th, Ambi? We'll, we'll add it to the June 4th?
There's a lot of older people who do pay somebody to put stuff in their vehicles or, you know, heavy things that they can't handle when they get there.
Our guys are out there, are, have they not been helpful to someone?
They helped me.
They helped me not.
But Pam, there is a, there's a curbside service. All they have to do is to call City Hall, right?
Jerry?
Yes, Mayor, there, there is a scale house operator and then there's an attendant over at the actual dump site, it's the transfer station. And all they would have to do is, is to ask. We, we help older folks out there all the time unload things. Now, that being said, we're, you know, we're not going to unload a trailer of things by hand, but, you know, if they have bags of trash or they bring a stove or something out, all they have to do is, is ask and someone will help them. It may not be immediate, you know, if they're onto something else, but they will help.
Okay. Maybe, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, maybe they could maybe pail the attention and, and you just go volunteer without request or you ask for help, you know?
We can take it up again.
Have you heard calls about this, Pam?
Mr. Thomas?
Couple older people, yeah.
I'm just asking if Andy's heard calls about it because.
I would encourage them to call the waste transfer station in advance of arriving, but from, from what I'm hearing from Mr. Arnold, we, we certainly would accommodate that.
Okay, I'll tell.
And there's such a thing for bulky pickup if you get on the list.
Anything else, Pam?
No, and speaking of bulky pickup, is that going to be resuming soon or?
We are following the queues from the West Virginia Public Service Commission and they have not, it's, it's just like the stuff with the utility thing. We've not gotten any additional orders from them. We're just following Charleston's mandates.
Okay.
We are doing, we are doing debris pickups now.
Mr. Thomas?
Said we are doing debris pickups on the first of the third Fridays.
Yard debris, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. Mr. Rylands?
I'm good.
Mr. Rylands has nothing for us. Mr. Skinner? Robbie?
My turn. Are we, are we to me? I just wanted to thank everybody who's been a part of the small business photography initiative. We have, I'm sitting at well over 120 orders. It's been very time consuming, but it's been a good project and I hope that we can wrap up orders here in the next week, week and a half and start getting some money distributed to the business community that's, that's certainly going to need a shot in the arm here, here pretty soon. So it's, it's been a huge success. Just want to thank everybody who's been a part of it and I'm trying to get pictures out to everybody as, as soon as they're, as soon as I'm done. My house is a Keebler factory for photography, so it's, but it's, it's been fun, it's been good and I'm looking forward to getting, getting the businesses to much needed help.
Are you suggesting you have some moonlighting elves down there at your place?
I, I, I need, I need, I, don't get me for workers' compensation fraud, but I, I could, I could use some employees.
All right. Mr. Thomas?
No comments. Everybody have a nice weekend and be safe.
Nice day. Mr. Sanders?
Well, thank you, Mr. Skinner, for, for what you're doing. That's, that's, it's been very generous, I'm sure it is, kind of up to your odds and lows with things now. And also thanks to the council total for supporting the initiative towards the World Band Association. I think it's going to be exciting and one of my ambitions is to continue to promote what Buchanan has to offer to thousands and to the world. I mean, at this point, we get an offer to the world and I'm glad we get that opportunity. I think it's a neat thing. So thanks for the confidence.
Thank you, Randy. Anything else?
Yep.
I just have a couple of, three quick things. First, I really do want to express our heartfelt appreciation to the county commission for the nearly $23,000 in funds that will largely cover at least the cost to date that we have incurred relative to the pandemic. You know, we, we don't always see things completely eye to eye between the two ends of Main Street, but way more times than not, we end up working together for the benefit of our entire community and we appreciate the county's gracious offering. I mentioned, Tim Reese had inquired at the last council meeting about the intentions of the college concerning the pandemic planning and the return of students. We did conduct that first meeting just here in the last few days. There are subcommittees that have been established by the college and they'll be meeting on a weekly basis. And I think as we see the month of June play out, information will be shared with the public about the resumption of classes and how things will be supervised, monitored at Wesleyan. So stay tuned for that. Mrs. Albaugh has been a great advocate for all things veterans. You know, we formed three years ago, the Veterans Affairs Council as an arm of our city and boy, she's just done a terrific job with that. Please, while observing these weird social constraints like social distancing, please come out next Monday at 1 o'clock for the Memorial Day ceremony. It's, it's a terrific thing and you'll see some, some good old friends out there, I promise you. And lastly, I also want to thank everybody who helped install the flags for the fallen at Heffner Cemetery. They're all up, as I've heard from Mr. Arnold. And we had a combination of city employees and community volunteers install the banners at our Walk of Valor down in Jawbone Park. So we're, we're, we're ready to go for Memorial Day. Last thing, as Ambi mentioned, please support the school levy on June 9th. A lot of folks will be doing early voting and absentee ballot voting. Please support the Gibson Library. That's all I have. I would entertain a motion that at about 8:36 we adjourn. On a motion by Albaugh, can I have a second to our motion?
Thomas, Thomas second.
Second by Thomas. Discussion on the motion note, call for the question. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
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 We'll see everybody back on June 4th. Thank you for being with us.
We're going to meet in the council chambers on June, aren't we, David, do you think?
We're waiting on additional instructions from Charleston. A lot of cities are going to continue for the next several weeks, months ahead, continuing to do these virtual meetings.
We have some of those distancing issues with how many square feet we can have people in, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, but I think we'll, I think we'll be able to.
We'll, we'll, we'll keep you posted, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Rodney and Brian, appreciate you guys. Rodney and Brian, appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Callie.
Thank you all.